Flatbed trailer to act as a stage. Do anybody have any leads?
Oh, well.
We need a stage for Community Day? Overstar or Smith? Smith's in the township. Where's Overstar? Is he in the township?
He's in the city.
He's in Harvey.
I mean, wouldn't it?
They do a lot of work for us, huh?
Okay, wouldn't just a flatbed trailer work for a stage?
Yeah.
Because that's what works in the Fourth of July Parade, right?
Yep, you just have to figure out how to get it in there.
Well, then maybe we'll move it. Maybe we'll move where we put it.
Yeah, you can. And then you gotta make sure you have enough color.
We just have to get some electricians to do some work. I know some of those that live in the township, too.
I love people that solve all the questions. It makes my job easier.
Well, you told me I was supposed to make it easier, John. Yeah, so Overstar or Smith? Okay, I know, I know Overstar. A little bit.
That shop would be willing to help you get something available.
Okay, yeah. I think a flatbed trailer will put them up high enough, don't you?
I think we've used closets before for something like.
We did too, but in the city. Really, I have to go to them, I will, but. Well, no, just because they're in the city and people ask them all the time. You know, that's, yeah, every probably class reunion.
Yeah.
Yeah, but yeah, I will.
Okay. All right, let's call this Planning Commission meeting for Wednesday, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three at seven oh-two PM to order. And we'll start off with roll call as usual.
Steve Hayden, Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, Eagle's Nest Road.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norman Street.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Administration.
Approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. On favor. Opposed. Minutes from previous meeting, March eighth, twenty twenty-three.
One adjustment to the meeting minutes on page. Two, underneath the motion, we actually scheduled this meeting for tonight, which is the twenty-second, although the meeting minutes reflect April twelfth. So Steve pointed that out, thank you for that. And the corrections aren't even made on the digital copies.
Okay.
Motion to approve is amended.
Support.
Discussion. On favor? Opposed. Public comment. Now it's time for public comment. If anyone would like to come up, and I see someone running up.
Reggie Durant from two-six-five Bishop's Road. I'd like to reserve time for new business item A.
Okay. Anyone else? See no one else, we're gonna move on to new business item six A. Twenty twenty-three Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Grant. Application, public hearing to gain input and public comment on a proposed collaborative trailhead project to be located on a Marquette Township-owned parcel of property at twenty-two seventy-five Grove Street in Marquette in coordination with the Nakemanon Trail Network. Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you. So as you know, we've been proposing or working with MTN on the establishment of a trailhead off of the Well Road. This is a public hearing that's required in order to apply for a Michigan Natural Resource Trust Fund Development Grant. And this was noticed in the newspaper for tonight, well in advance of this meeting, actually about three weeks ahead. As such, the Planning Commission's been made aware of the project itself, and I have some more details to provide to you tonight than I had at the previous meeting when we were just kind of slamming this thing together. So with that, this is the initial project site that we are looking at. There's also an additional site that's south of this that we're also looking at. This was brought up by having a conversation with a landscape architect who was identifying some issues and opportunities in the area. And there are some opportunities down south of this that offer a location away from the residences and also provide some some more room, if you will, for perhaps a larger parking area and just some additional room to wiggle, if you will. This is the second location down here, so if you look, I'll go over here so you guys don't have to turn around. This is the initial location that we're looking at here. And this is another area that we're going to be looking at. So the project remains the same, same scope items, same idea, same concept. Although we will be looking at both of those locations. Ultimately, the board will have that decision as to where they want to put it, should this get approved tonight and make it to them. Just identifying that this project is within our recreation plan, the five-year recreation plan, and has been in there for some time. I think it may have even been in the previous version of our five-year recreation plan. But basically, in an effort to work with NTN to establish a trailhead where we have lots of trails. Some of the breakdown on the numbers, so we're looking at a ninety thousand dollar grant with a sixty thousand dollar match, totaling a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Right now, we're at a forty percent match, which is probably the highest that I've seen in the twelve years that I've been here for any kind of recreational grant and all of. Let you know how that came about, but the Township Board will likely contribute fifteen thousand dollars for the marijuana excise tax money that they receive, we receive. And then NTN is proposing a twenty-five thousand dollar cash match, which is great. MTN is also proposing a ten thousand dollar labor and materials match, so a lot of the, I don't know about the pit vault toilet perhaps, but the pavilion that's proposed, likely that'll be done by in-kind labor. And then just a conversation this morning with the Superior Watership Partnership and Carl Lindquist. I asked him for a simple letter of support. He had asked if we wanted any labor. I said that'd be great, and he agreed to ten thousand dollars worth of labor. So that brings our match up considerably. So there's twenty thousand dollars of labor and/or in-kind materials match. And by materials, you're looking at wood products, things of that nature. With regard to the scope items, we're looking at a crushed stone parking lot, so an impermeable surface, thirty-five thousand dollars, two benches at two thousand dollars, a bike rack at a thousand, pavilion at twenty-seven thousand, two recycling bins at two thousand, two trash bins at two thousand. The pit vault toilet, which is a double-sided toilet. NTN's put one of those in this year, so they know that that costs fifty thousand dollars and is the thrust of the scope item budget. Signage, so we're looking at having obviously a nice sign, map, trail rules, helpful hints and tricks on the trails to stay safe. And access pathways, so from the parking lot, there would be kind of a trail constructed to the other trails that it's tying into. We kind of bolstered the budget on that item. I suspect most of that will be done with in-kind, as well as the the playfield, which is also essentially a pump track adjacent to the parking lot. So that's what their kids really like, is to use the pump track. The pavilion will provide some shelter for, you know, people that are watching their kids or want to get out of inclement weather. So that's where we're at. So far, the grant application, of course, is due on the first, and with Eric being on vacation, quite busy. But we open to any comments or questions. And obviously, as this is a public hearing, we hope to hear from anybody in the public that may have some concerns. We did receive some concerns from one of our utility individuals, Rob Milkie, who had indicated that, just for full disclosure, that this was kind of a bad idea to put it down here. We'd be moving the gate, obviously, south. We've talked to John Kengus, manager. We've talked to Public Works Director, our Pub Corps Superintendent. Lenny Bodatus about this, didn't think it was a major issue. The well field's well below this area, actually. And in fact, the wellhead protection area, which is essentially a roughly this shape area where you really can't bury utilities or anything, because that's where we get our, that's where the aquifer is for our well water in this area. That's well south of what we're looking at. Rob's comments were that we have people that are overnight camping, dumping trash, and the like. Our response to that was, you know, there's going to be trash receptacles, we can put a dumpster down there, there's going to be more people down there, more eyeballs, if you will, on the area. And we, you know, kind of speculated that that would be an improvement to the area. Furthermore, we have sixty acres here between the two parcels. And, you know, there's been other ideas brought forth with sledding hills, more of the passive type of stuff, where we actually have some room to develop this property. And we don't have to go out and buy sixteen acres at a hundred thousand dollars an acre and try to acquire that through a grant. We have property that we can utilize. So that's kind of the reasoning and justification of the two locations. We would prefer that it get away from the residents that are in this area. If you've got a home site here, 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 and here and here. Like to get people further down into that area and kind of out of sight out of mind. That's what I have as far as a staff report. And like I said, we open to any questions, but this is a public hearing and everybody should be here.
Are we going to entertain questions from the Commissioners now, or is that later?
Up to the Chair.
Yeah, you can do them now.
Just want, you mentioned overnight camping. Is there overnight camping on that site now?
None of that's permitted. It's occurring, but it's not permitted. And I don't know why it's happening when there's a gate there. So.
Will this be contemplated as having a registered overnight camping?
No.
Okay.
No, just a simple trailhead. And nothing to the scale of what is on County Road five fifty-three even. You know, that's a significant parking lot. We're looking at between thirty and forty vehicles, maybe. Nothing like what is along County Road five fifty-three.
And have you, second question, I'm sorry, are you done with that? Okay, second question, how will it be styled? What will it be called? Have we decided that yet? How will it be portrayed?
No name yet. We're not looking at putting like Oracle Park or anything like that. We'll come up with something creative, perhaps a monument sign, you know, at the intersection of the Well Road and some directional signage on the way down, but nothing that's distasteful or, you know, we hope to landscape it well and make it tasteful. Obviously, we don't want anything that's less than that. Thank you.
When, when will you decide at what site to put it at? Will that be in discussed and who's going to make a motion and where to put it in the Township meeting?
Good question. So between now and next Tuesday, when the board meets for a special meeting to hopefully pass a resolution based on the public hearing outcome tonight, we hope to have a conceptual site plan. So the landscape architect is looking at topography in that area and looking at what's most feasible, understanding that there's limitations to the south with regard to the wellhead protection area and, and just the size, you know, we don't want to take up more than, you know, a couple acres to develop the trailheads.
Would it be wise of us to make a recommendation as to which site to use?
You could. You could, you know, make a recommendation to the board, but, you know, ultimately, I think that that they'll make their decision. And I'll have some input, obviously, too, when it gets to the board about, you want, you want to keep this towards, you know, Grove Street, or do you want to start to explore, you know, recreational options further down south on property that we already own?
And I don't think it's bad for the Funding Commission to make a recommendation. I think we're looking at things differently than they are, and I think, I think they need to know we're working towards that goal.
Yeah, we've talked about putting security cameras in. There's pretty fancy hunting cameras now that you can camouflage, and they'll upload right to the server with anything that, you know, might be nefarious.
When you're doing the signage, is there going to be signage at the corner of the Wellhead Road and Grove Street?
Right, right. So there'd be maybe a monument sign low slung to the ground, just, you know, Marquette Township, NTN, trailhead south, head south. And then obviously, you know, trailhead, half mile, five hundred meters.
Jason, in the future, how is the maintenance cost going to be funded?
Right, so we, NTN actually brought up the point that they would help to maintain it. To what extent, I don't know what that is, but, you know, we only have Shorewood Park and we have Lions Field. So I suspect for building a grounds crew to, you know, add another stop on their run would not be that extreme of a maintenance cost, so.
And when you say it's a trailhead, is it pedestrian trailhead? Is it a electric bike trailhead? Is it a snowmobile trailhead? What's the contemplation of the scope it uses?
So that's a good question. Non-motorized trailhead. NTN, you know, they have a license to develop trails on the adjacent thirty acres to the east of that picture, by that star on the rectangle. And they envision developing trails for walking in that property. If they had a trailhead to work with, they said that they would be comfortable with developing trails for other users other than mountain bikers.
So isn't the NTN used for cross-country skiing, too?
Depends which trail you're using.
I mean, just, just for grins and giggles, I mean, the, you would be, you know, you could park near the Grove Street proposed site, but if you're going to use it in the winter, guess what? Three-quarters of a mile road, who's going to plow that?
It's plowed every day.
It's plowed all the way past that, the proposed site? Okay.
Yeah. It's plowed all the way down to the well.
And then who would maintain that area? The parking lot, all that stuff?
Either we would or NTN would.
Township would take that responsibility on?
Well, I think initially we'd have to commit to it, but like I said, NTN's really willing to work with us as far as shared maintenance costs and effort.
So to follow up on Jim's questions about whether we should make a recommendation regarding location, is the red rectangle we're looking at now, is that the alternate location or is that the first preferred location?
Well, after considering some of the comments that were made between NTN and the landscape architect and myself, I kind of agree with where the red location is or the rectangle is, just because it offers us more room, it's not near any residents, it offers future opportunities. I mean, if the trailhead parking lot is established and it's not overutilized as a trailhead, there's opportunities to piggyback parking with other uses in that area.
And the, the other property that the township owns, if you were to try to point that out, is that like contiguous but diagonal for that rectangle, to the south and east, or south and west?
Yeah, so the township owns this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, this parcel, and all the way to the southern boundary of the township.
Okay, so it goes southeast?
Yeah, yeah. Similar to where the road is. See how the road just cuts in on, on this parcel. So this, this is owned by the city. This is owned by Mr. Combenzi. And I believe this one's owned by the cattle company, too, which is also a proxy of Mr. Combenzi.
And it's owned residential, it's owned recreational?
It's all zone forest recreation. So the only land uses that are allowed in this area are actually recreational uses. And the reason we did that was to preserve the property for recreation and enjoyment by all. In fact, you know, once you get down in this area, this is part of the hardwood forest tract essentially that wraps around and comes back over to the city over this way.
And the city owns it, but it's in the township?
That's true, yeah.
So the city pays a township tax.
The Recreation Committee actually asked, you know, the feasibility of purchasing that property back from the city, and of course, I told them that we would always be interested in those discussions.
So I, I support the location selection. And I had the opportunity to attend the Econ Club meeting on Monday night where Dave O'Hara talked about the electrification, I think I said that correctly, of sports vehicles, so electric bikes, electric motorcycles, electric snow machines, electric ATVs, and how that is going to, in his mind, his mind, that's going to help the Upper Peninsula be on the map for recreation. So it's interesting that we talk about creating trailheads and having this available. So it was an interesting presentation. I'm not saying I agree with him, but I do know there's an increase in the number of people coming to our community.
But this area here is going to be non-motorized? This is a non-motorized trailhead?
Correct, correct. But there's still those people that come along. So think about, you know, how, who's coming here, what they're coming for.
There'll still be Class One e-bikes permitted.
So, so it was quite interesting if you have an opportunity to talk to you.
I think ourselves, the city, and NTN all support by resolution, Class One e-bikes. And think about that, you know, if you're up in age, or maybe like you're like me, and not in that great of shape right now, those really extend your, extends your ability to exercise and gets you out there. I think of it more from just a age, mobility perspective. You know, Denny could be ripping up the trails out there on a Class One e-bike. And they're actually selling more e-bikes now than they are regular pedal bikes. If you talk to Lakeshore Bike, or maybe not the sports track, but I know Lakeshore definitely does. Full suspension e-bikes, mountain bikes, they're like fifteen thousand dollars, some of them. Actually, I think they're creeping up close to twenty. Some of the specialized, you know, Evo, Expert, carbon fiber, everything, John Windmill.
S-Works.
S-Works, yeah.
E-Notes, too.
So the Well Road isn't just going to be for pedestrians, obviously, because you're already using it for vehicular traffic? Bikes can use that, snowmobiles can use that, four-wheelers can still use that tra, that road?
Well, no, we hope people either walk or drive down there to get to the trailhead. The gate would be moved to a point south of wherever it ends up. And then there would be no additional access down there. I don't know, I mean, maybe snowmobiles do use it now. You know, technically, it's a private road.
Snowmobiles and four-wheelers.
I, I don't know that snowmobiles use the road, but perhaps they do.
They use the old state road to that intersection anyway, for sure.
Right.
You know, that's still a county road.
Right, so you, you can still use that for snowmobiles and?
I don't think, I don't know how you'd stop them. I mean, you could drive cars down it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, sometimes we get caught up in the worst-case scenario, but
Right.
I, I think this is a good project and I'm getting a lot of positive feedback.
Has there been any written comments about this?
No, other than the five or six so far letters of support that I've received from Travel Marquette, anticipating receiving one from Lake Superior Community Partnership, certainly one with a committal from MTN and the commitment from Superior Watership Partnership, Q-PAD, obviously, I'm going to talk to Sale next week or Superior Alliance for Independent Living to make sure we cover our universal design components where and when feasible. But yeah, we're going to be using recycled plastic materials for trash and recycling receptacles.
What does a thousand-dollar bench look like? Is it like composite material?
Recycled plastic, yeah, yeah.
Are they special ordered or are they locally sold? Because I'm interested in getting some.
I can give you, there's a company called Barco, V-A-R-C-O dot com, and we typically purchase all of our park equipment from there, and I'm kind of OCD that way, so I like to make sure that all of our benches match. So all of our parks right now have very similar benches, picnic tables, what have you. And that's by design to let you know that you're in a Marquette Township park.
And are they, are the benches that need to be mounted on cement with bolts, or are they freestanding?
Benches need to be mounted with a padded area around them for wheelchair access. So yes, you put the pea gravel around the bench, I think it's fifty or sixty inches in diameter to allow the individual to exit the wheelchair and comfortably sit on the bench.
Can you have all those in telephoned, send you an email, you could send me those?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
So would this be allowed to be used twenty-four hours a day, or is there a, like, not after eleven, or?
I haven't, I haven't thought that far about it. I mean, that would be a policy issue for the board to consider, honestly.
Don't all be lighted.
No, we're not proposing to run any utilities, although I believe there's obviously water running the length of the road. But I don't believe electric goes down that far. I don't think it does.
There's power to the wellhouse, but there's no electrical drop near that location.
Okay. So, yeah, we're not proposing to light it. Like I said, very simple project, other than the nice amenities that'll be located there. But really, in a scope, hopefully not much of a dent in, in the land there.
I guess I'd have one suggestion, I don't know what you'd want to do about it, but you know, I'm, I'm on that road three or four times a day, you know, going by there, and it's really kind of an issue with people coming off of that road that really don't look to see if their car's coming, and, you know, people coming around there fifty miles an hour and somebody pulls out right in front of you, which has happened to me, maybe like a stop sign there? So that people would have to come to a complete stop instead of just, you know, wheeling out of there?
Oh, sure, we can address that. We also talked about the vision triangles exiting there. So, you know, we want to make sure that people have a clear, you know, a vision triangle, essentially, I can see we do have power poles running down, and we just don't have a drop, like John said, so here's your power line going across and back down. But yes, making sure that, you know, you have your vision triangles here. I even had the idea, I know it's kind of pie in the sky, but if it really takes off and becomes a recreational area, there is an opportunity to perhaps work with these property owners and realign this intersection so that's directly across from Vandenboeum. That would make a big difference, because this is an offset turning movement here, for sure. So yeah, that's a concern, but we don't expect it to be overrun, you know, with five fifty-three, that's, that's their main trailhead, but with this project, you know, people that enjoy that specific set of trails could, you know, more easily access. And this is currently up a trail right here that runs along the property. This area is a little bit conflicted because there is a eight-inch waterline that ties into a twelve-inch waterline that runs down to the Wellhead Road. There's also a PRV valve right here, and so while we could put a gravel driveway in the parking lot, you wouldn't want to have any structures over the top of any of the utilities. So that kind of cramped us a little bit here. Plus, you have residents that have been critical of other activities in this particular area over the years by phone call that I've responded to.
Maybe if we made the motion, we could make it with a suggestion that that road be aligned if possible? Would that screw up the application?
I think it should be noted in the meeting minutes, but I wouldn't want it to be contingent.
No, I didn't say contingent.
Yeah.
I said if possible.
Yeah, I will reflect in the meeting minutes that it's been encouraged and, you know, that we will explore that option. Like I said, if it does become more of a utilized situation, it would be, I don't think it would be that difficult to realign that. And conform with our access management principles.
All right. Any other questions or comments, Jus?
Not this time.
Well, I was going to open up the public hearing now. So we'll open up the public hearing now at seven thirty-two. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward.
Reggie Durant from two-six-five Bishop Woods Road. It sounds like you're in favor, so this may be just moot until I speak, but I'll bring you a little clarity. The south trails on 553 are groomed for fat tire biking during the winter. There, there's really no skiing there. So the same thing would affect this, and I don't know what they're going to do in Oak Hill. If they would have to have a groomer to come in so you could fat tire bike. The skiing is up on the north trails and fat tire biking also. Some of the best skiing in the world is in the forest field and the trailhead. So I just, and of course, because it's a Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund Development Grant, we have to follow up the DNRs, what the state rules are. So I believe we have to have Class 1, Class 1 bikes, but you can check that out.
Yeah, that wasn't contemplated by us. We, we knew that that was the case, but thank you for clarifying.
Sure. And it's, it's, you know, it's the future. Maybe one of these days I'll have one. But it's still pedaling away. But anyways, I just, I, I won't go into a lot of detail, I'll be real quick here. I have some key points that I'm excited about. It's good for business as a previous lodging owner. You know, we have so many people that come up and stayed with us in regards to Oak Hill. There's mountain biking, fat tire biking, winter skiing. Secondly, we've got restaurants coming to the township. That's great. And also there's a future bike shop, I understand, going to be built in Marquette Township or under construction right now. It's great for Marquette residents. It's going to be a nicer location, maybe easier to get to. I have grandchildren, they like to go to the pump tracks and they like to ride. I think it's a great thing. It's also another attraction for people thinking about coming to the township that want to get to the trails quickly. I think of the proposed long, long-year project that if I was a snowmobiler and a mountain biker and a skier, I'm right there on the trails. So that's, that's really stellar. And then, you already covered it, the funds are set aside thanks to Linda's recommendation from the marijuana regulation fund or the grant with the township's portion. That is wonderful. Thank you for that. And I am, I should admit, I am an Oak Hill member. I'm also a Trail Segments sponsor. But I think this is great and I will be probably riding it after it's built, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
Brian Turner, Oak Hill. Can I ask a question regarding the future development of additional trails throughout the south trail system? Is that also part of this proposal?
No, but they would only, NTN can only build trails where we allow them to. It's not as it has been for the last twenty-five years, kind of laissez-faire wherever they go. We do have a license agreement with NTN now, so we kind of work together. They kind of come to us and say, hey, we want to build some trails here. I have a feeling that there would be additional trails built, certainly for connectivity purposes to what is existing in this area. But as far as it creeping closer to Oak Hill or connections that way, other than the obvious kind of elephant in the room right there, this is privately held, so we can't develop any trails on that property. And not in addition, the only other trails that they were talking about were perhaps some walking trails for people that would like to walk because obviously there's been some conflict over the years as far as users.
Okay. So any additional expansion of the trail network that exists to the south currently would have to go through?
Marquette Township.
Marquette Township.
Yes, sir.
Can I ask, what is the, the driving purpose of this trailhead?
It was a project that was identified through master planning, recreation planning, community surveys, and just general interactions throughout the office. And obviously, NTN and ourselves are partners. And so through those discussions, they would like to have a trailhead. And instead of fighting with the city to acquire land and develop a trailhead, we decided to work together and, you know, and collaboratively do the project.
But for what purpose? To increase access to those trails down there?
To improve access.
Okay. I can personally tell you that those trails aren't heavily used right now already. And we have no issue with access whatsoever. Fortunately, you know, for those who live there, there is very easy access to all of those trails from Oak Hill, Lake Enchantment, Bishop Woods, and the surrounding neighborhoods as well. You don't have a lack of use on those trails right now whatsoever. My fear is that with an additional access point for people who are driving there, in addition to the people who are already accessing it from where they live, we're going to have quite a bit of bike-bike interaction, bike-walker interaction. It's used by not just mountain bikers, but people walking their dogs, people trail-running, snowshoes, skiers in the wintertime, and the occasional stoner, you know, kind of passing through on their way to the, to the rec trail. I feel like it's already somewhat congested at times and it certainly is not inaccessible at this point. Unfortunately, I don't think, I appreciate the, the public notice for this meeting. I don't think those that have best interest in this area really received it. I don't know if there's any additional time to gather some of those other public comments before the board makes any sort of recommendation or if it's pretty much a set in stone type thing at this point. But I do know it will vastly change what's, what's already a heavily used system into a congested system. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we'll close the public hearing at seven four, seven thirty-nine. Any questions, comments?
Jason, did you say that that road's already being used as?
Well, it's not because it's a, to the gentleman's comments, you know, it is a private road and it's gated. So right now, there's not vehicular access to get down to that area.
No foot traffic, there's biking traffic.
Right, so, you know...
But they can still turn off Grove Street right now and park before the gate.
Yeah, it's essentially a trailhead already.
Well, but we've also had some issues with that. So what we're trying to do is, you know, somewhat establish an area out of the way further down the road where, you know... It's safer. I mean, that's, that's one of the key components of the whole project.
And create a place for our children. Pump tracks are very popular.
For what are?
Pump tracks. Probably seven to twelve-year-olds. Or without flying farther.
Yeah, and then with regard to the notification that's required in order to apply for the grant, it's unlikely like a special use permit where everybody within three hundred feet of the property would be notified. That's more of a zoning thing, but we do follow the requirements of the state notifications, so.
I'm sure. You mentioned the paper. I don't think it'll be a paper, especially.
Maybe not the C, the C-section, yeah. But, you know, we updated our recreation plan just last year and the project was mentioned again. And that's why it ended up in this, actually early in the, you know, we have a five-year scope of projects that we'd like to do. And this was in 2022. Last year, we tried to acquire some property up, up the hill and venture there and it didn't work out in our favor yet. And that's the reason why, you know, the Recreation Committee looked at what projects were kind of a low-hanging fruit that obviously we had a collaboration partnership with NTN and this is the one that they identified. And now it's to the Planning Commission for their consideration.
I have a question. So assuming that we make a motion, whether it's a motion that recommends the Township Board approve this grant application by resolution or a motion recommending the Township Board approve the grant application by resolution and also recommending the location, whether we, either one of those motions, does that, by doing this, recommending this resolution, does this in any way limit the types of activities that might be future, contemplated in the future on the other areas? Like at the last meeting, someone suggested, I don't know who it was, that maybe there'd be a dog park eventually down in that area. So would, in other words, if you designate this, my question is, if you designate this as a trail area, does that preclude like having like a recreational park area with a pavilion with a?
No.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Hey Linda, at the township board meeting, is there allowed public comment?
We actually encourage people to come because it's all, other than myself, it's a whole different world of people. Yeah, come. You want to hear it from our residents?
That's at the next public, the next quarter?
That is on Tuesday at four o'clock.
It's next Tuesday?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we have an April one grant deadline, so, you know, we're working under a deadline.
Understood.
In a compact schedule. I mean, this is the furthest away from any residences that I can think of that we've ever developed anything with regard to park properties, except for, well, even Schwalmwood has the forest ridge, site condominium adjacent to it. And then that little old lady next to the, what used to be the carpet specialist. But this is, I mean, in, in my view, it's well out of sight, out of mind as far as location goes.
Can you... That line in there is the gas pipeline. Right, just south of the star there, that's the gas line going through there. Are you allowed, is anybody not allowed to walk, ride, four-wheelers, snow wheelers, bikes on there?
I don't know. I mean, on our portion, there's obviously some cross-traffic, but it's private property everywhere else, so I couldn't tell you what the stipulations are. But I know that there's, I'm trying to think. You know, they just put in all that pipeline over by the south trailhead as well. And I think that that's utilized where and when it can be, so as long as they don't build anything on it or they...
Any more comments, questions?
I could answer your question, use, use that if you wanted to. The property owners have been gracious enough to allow walkers, walkers, hikers, whatever, between Oak Hill, I'm just kidding, actually, between Oak Hill and that well road. So it is utilized. There's a well, a well-worn path. And people have been very respectful of the property for many years. There's quite a few trails in that system, actually, that are unmarked, used pretty frequently to the graciousness of the landowners and treated with respect by, you know, that neighborhood community. It's used, but it's, that's, I guess, there's no official access publicly, but it is used respectfully. And the landowners have been nice enough to let people do that.
Since you, we would be taking state money for this, are there any kind of restrictions whatsoever for anything as to what we couldn't do with that?
Yes, it would be, you know, we'll probably end up taking a portion of property, whatever portion that is, and maybe segregating it out so that it wouldn't fall under the requirement for that entire thirty acres to be required to be a park property in perpetuity, even though that that's what it's zoned for anyway, if that makes sense. So, yeah, that'll be, that'll be flushed out. But our intention is to get a piece of property, you know, describe it, and then utilize only that so that the rest of the land isn't encumbered by the state's requirements that the park be, well, we already own it, right? So I guess that doesn't matter. Once it's established and developed as a trailhead, whatever portion of property that is, one acre, two acres, will have to be a park property in perpetuity. There are some conversions that take place, but you do get heavily penalized for something like that in future grant applications.
Still thinking or? We'll need a motion one way or the other.
Make a motion to recommend that the Township Board approve by resolution the grant application described in Agenda Item Number Six A with the additional recommendation that the location of this project be located on the picture attached to our staff report that has the red rectangle.
And the street realignment? Recommended?
Was that going to be just noted in the minutes?
Prefer it that way.
Okay, no, I didn't.
All right.
Do you need a second?
I need a second.
I'll sit for that.
Okay. Any more discussion?
Yeah, you know, I, I live in Lake Enchantment as does Bethany, and I can appreciate the gentleman's concerns of more use. You know, we live on a private lake, it's surrounded by private property. And we have people crossing, they're skiing across it with their dogs and they're snowshoeing. You know, and I've actually gotten, you know, attitude from people saying, hey, this is a private lake. You know, you're violating, you know, crossing private property out here. We have no trespassing signs out there. So, you know, like, you know, like, I, I understand what his concerns are. You know, the county road that is County Road HJ is the old state road, and that's still a county road. I mean, that's open to anybody at any time for anything, if you can drive through it. Right now, because it's a seasonal road, it's not maintained by the county, other than maybe very little maintenance, but it's still a county road. And anybody can use that. I don't think it's part of the NTN. I don't believe it is, you know, because I do ride a Class 2 electric bike on there, so I, you know, I, I would have an issue if somebody said I can't. And so the rest of the trails, I'm not sure about. I'm not sure what they, what they intend to develop there. You're going to have a trailhead. Is there, where, where does the trail go? I can't even see where the trail is there. Do you have any idea how it's defined and laid out?
I apologize for not having the trail layer on the image. But there are trails already established there, as the gentleman said. And there's a bunch of historic trails that have been there. There's people, you know, like I said, I'm from the area, been back here... There's people, you know, like I said, I'm from the area, been back here for a while now, and we hear constantly about conflict of trail users, walkers, bikers, dog walkers especially, unleashed dogs. So, you know, we're gonna add some educational components, we're gonna have an area for people to congregate, park, and then launch. And hopefully, they will stay on the NTN trails and not utilize some of the other trails that are less formal. But, yeah, I guess if that kind of answers your question.
Yeah, no, I'm in favor, but I do appreciate it.
Yeah, I do too, I understand.
Would there be anything the Township could do to, like, post-private property or no trespassing on certain of the trails, some of the trails in there, to keep people from going up into residential areas?
Potentially, yeah, I mean, certainly that's something we could do, whether or not the Board wants to do that or not. You know, I don't believe in mucking up scenery with a bunch of signs either. It's not the school of planning that I came from, but if it's deemed to be necessary, you know, obviously, if we have a bunch of problems down there, we can shut the trailhead off and just tell the state, you know, maybe we'll pay it back, I don't know, I don't know how that works. But there are contingencies for everything, and I know you guys like to, well, we all do, right? With certain things, but look at the worst-case scenario, but I think it's gonna be a positive thing.
I would say we're looking at all-case scenarios.
Yeah, all-case scenarios.
I think it's more fair.
But, yeah, we're not looking to create any controversy, we're trying to resolve some issues that have been longstanding in the area.
I think it'd be better to look at it, you don't know ahead of time, instead of after, and then, you know, react, instead of be proactive to any problems that are gonna come up. The only thing I can see that would be kind of a big problem is that gas line goes right into the residential neighborhood there, you know, Oak Hills, and that's, you know, like a straight shot right over there from that area, then, you know, people aren't going to just stay on the NTN trails if they're there and they want to do something, you know, whatever. But it's not enough to make me vote no on it, but it's just something that I can kind of maybe see happening.
Manager Kengas may have a couple of comments if you want to recognize it.
It's easy to perceive that by looking at a two-dimensional screenshot. As you approach Oak Hills, that utility easement, it's almost straight up. That being said, there's two tracks going off that I think they might be old four-wheeler trails.
There's multiple trails that give you from Well Road into Oak Hill. There's an easement, actually, that leads to the whole trail system and then the whole, sorry, what do you call it, sir?
Yeah, they come off the gas line.
Carriage road.
Little state road.
One way to the south, little state road. There's also a trail system that goes in the back, all the way to Oak Hill from there to.
Drives people right into it.
Yeah, yeah, so there's multiple established trails that go, and they're not just the steep pipeline.
Right, that was my point, the utility easement wouldn't be used to get to Oak Hills. It's the trails veering off there as it gets to that steep hill. And he's right, there's a whole bunch of old trails in there, but they are not marked as part of the NTN network. So, I can't predict every issue that would come. I think he's concerned about impacts to their area, rightfully so. We, as a township, if this happens, will have to address those, but you're not gonna be able to predict everything that will happen. I know NTN has specifically agreed not to sign those trails that have been historically used by multimeters at the request of the property owners, so.
Yeah, I mean, we intend to have, you know, a parking lot, here's your trailhead with an arch, and go into the trail system, that's NTN trail system, not, you know, go play around in Oak Hills and, you know, do what you like. We're definitely trying to channel people into the NTN trail system, hence their.
Let's keep in mind the purpose of that road, too, is to get to our well field and our well house. So that's its primary use. If we add the secondary use of non-motorized recreation access, which is already there, just probably due inadequate design, in my opinion, it's an improvement of what's already there with potential negative impact to the neighboring community.
Just direct research to Pioneer Route, or further down the Well Road to Creek Nature?
So, my understanding, sir, is that there is a trail that comes in down this way, and then NTN has, you know, they made a connection trail over to, you know.
Gray Walls.
Gray Walls, and so, you know, you'd be looking to tie it in in this, you know, in this proximity area.
There's a connector up to the Well Road already, it's part of the Old Black Trail. In fact, the Old Black Trail used to go across the Well Road and across Katamise up towards Oak Hills. And that portion is no longer signed. Up from the Well Road to the east, it's a connector to the Gray Walls or the Pioneer.
And this is just for your info, it kind of does not do with this, but it does a little bit. You know, I live up on Oak Hills, and there are quite a few people who have snowmobiles and four-wheelers up there, and there are trails all behind our houses on each side of the subdivision that come down and hook up with that County Road HJ. And we've had quite a few occasions where people have gone up onto those trails and cut trees down on that property, so that snowmobiles and four-wheelers couldn't get to that county road, because they said that the county road is part of the NTN network, which wasn't true. And there have been, kind of like, some fights back there with people, but, so.
Yeah, again, I mean.
It's not a map trail for NTN.
I know, and that's what they try telling them, but they, of course, thought they were right, so.
Those are some of the issues that we're hoping to resolve, and perhaps we can do some of that through signage and education, you know, having a really good map of where you're at, where you can go, and what's signed by NTN. We're not gonna show trails on our map kiosk that are not NTN-designated trails.
All right, anyone else? We'll have a roll call vote then. Steve Hakinen?
Yes.
Kenny Ferraro?
Yes.
Bethany Cody?
Yes.
Linda Winslow?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Motion passes, and we're good to go.
Thanks, more work to do. Are you guys interested in signing a letter of support?
One thing while I'm thinking about that, when you're talking about signing something, I noticed there was another sympathy card back there. Were we supposed to sign anything on there, or?
Um, we.
I know we missed the one last time.
We just picked it up today, if you'd like to, that is for Dennis Andrews, his dad, blank, as a result of.
Okay. All right, unfinished business?
Uh, no unfinished business.
Okay, Correspondents, Michigan Planner article, how to talk about housing in the community.
Yeah, interesting article, this is for your information, there are some highlights that I made, but as we're talking about housing, and we're being critical of, not even supposed to say it, density, after you read the article, but more like proximity to things that people want. I think it's a great article, and it really should quell some of the concerns. I mean, this is coming right from Michigan Planning Association, this is being promoted by the Michigan Townships Association as far as a housing crisis in the state, and across the country, for that matter. So, read of that at your leisure, I think it'll come in handy for our joint meeting with the Township Board at our next meeting. And I'm sure, you know, you may have some questions or things that come up, but Linda turned me on to this. Well, I get the same articles that you guys do, but this was available by email, and then it was also in their monthly, so, something for you guys to look at, take in.
Did you guys get it, did you get the Michigan Planner?
Yeah.
I was looking at that.
I just read it before, Jason.
Yeah, yeah, she got to it before.
I went, wow!
Okay, Reports, Township Board Report, Mrs. Winslow.
Okay, the Township Board, Matt, we paid our bills. We had some communication with our friends at the Solid Waste Place, who are saying that all of our recyclables aren't selling us quickly now. Hopefully, that picks back up. We had a presentation by a group called Respect Market County, and they have that little, what is that called, the little flyer?
Tabletop.
Tabletop thing. And I'm hoping that that's some information we would use on a kiosk throughout our park system.
Yeah.
We also asked them if they would come to our Community Day event in August and set up a table, so we can target some people. So that was good. We have staff reports. We, I made a, we passed a motion to use fifty thousand dollars of the Adult Use Marijuana Funds to be put aside for matching grant money, and it passed. I was gonna call Jason and tell him that, but I didn't. So I'm excited about that, that's money we're not always going to get, and I think that I've heard around that we needed to have some money to do that, so we did.
Is that, you know, is the fifteen thousand dollars is gonna be used for the prior discussion that we just had? Is that coming out of this fifty thousand, or is it an addition to fifty thousand?
No.
No, it's coming out of that.
It'll come out of that. That money comes annually from the marijuana use taxes from the state of Michigan. We looked at our 2023 priority goals and reviewed them, and we're moving ahead on those already, so that's great. And we are going to put them behind us, so when you come to the meetings, you'll see the balls, and you can see where we're at, and if in fact, there are things that are part of the Planning Commission. Yeah, it's always good to look at things. Other than that, did you guys get the minutes right? Yay, and all this stuff, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Recommend you report.
The recommendee met last night, and we discussed the grant application, the process. I gave an update on the scope and the potential budget, and they're satisfied with that. And, of course, again, recommended that the Planning Commission move this forward, so thank you for doing that. Again, this will be going to the Township Board next Tuesday at four o'clock, special meeting, because a resolution of commitment is required, just indicating that the Township, if awarded, will follow through on what they're proposing to do. And so, between now and next week, I'll be very busy putting together the rest of the application and getting that off to Lansing prior to next Friday.
Okay, Road Committee?
Yeah, Road Committee, so, I often, thank you guys, rely on Eric for that, and he is on vacation in Hawaii for two weeks. He picked a fine time to leave me, Lucille, but that's the way it goes, and glad he's getting some time off and taking that time. So, he will have a report for you when he returns. But I believe that the 2023 road maintenance schedule is out there, and I'll try to get a copy of that for you guys for your next meeting when he's back.
When are they gonna fix this street out here?
So that one, yeah, that one.
That wasn't done that long ago.
And I don't know if it's our responsibility, like, I think that's a Fed Eight road, but I'm not positive, because it's a heavy haul road, similar to Ontario where it's not part of the local roads.
So, that's a road that's all-season? So, was it designed as an all-season road, or why is it falling apart so fast?
Well, there's, we've had underwater spring issues along Moran and right at this corner, and going underneath for some time. And so, I saw the Road Commission out there yesterday in the dry areas putting hot patch down. I have a feeling they'll be addressing it in earnest once they're able to dry it out.
Yeah, a little heads up, too, at the intersection of Grove and McClellan, too. No, not Grove and, yeah, Grove and McClellan, they play a golf course there, on the southbound, Northbound Lane. Holy cow, those paths are the size of cars.
Yeah, you can lose a child in one of those. Yeah, that's, that's within the city. That's a big one, yeah.
The Township Board will be meeting, in a joint meeting with the Road Commission, I think, in April or May.
Yep.
So, I'll make sure you guys know, there's no reason why you come talk about these roads.
Well, that one was done twice over there.
Well.
Within a year, I think.
Different, keep in mind that there's different treatments to a road to extend.
The first one didn't really hold up to it. Was that older than here?
Crack seal's only good for three years, before it falls apart. We experienced the same thing on Northwoods, too. You know, I was driving with Carol the other day, and I was like, hey, this is crack sealed, you can see where it's separated there, and, so, yeah, it's only good for a few years. I think Northern, or Northwoods Road is on the list this year to have a mill in over there or something, so. Not just because they live.
I kind of didn't know where to bring this up, but I wanted to bring this up tonight, but since we're under Road Committee, I thought maybe this might be a good spot. In the fifteen years I've been living here in the Township now, this is the worst year for plowing the roads that I've seen. I mean, it's, I don't know if it's just our subdivision or what, but, I mean, they don't get up there for three to four days after. And by that time, everything's frozen over, then they have to get a grader up there sometimes, and I'm assuming the other subdivisions are the same way. And I know a few years ago, you had, it was like a plow that was on call, or that you used?
Yeah, that was when Greg Britton was still with us, he's since retired, and we don't really have that capability anymore. My suggestion would be to call the Road Commission and Squeaky Wheel against Degrees. So, if you've got an issue, I would talk to either Alex Elzenheimer or Pete Dukes, and see if you can get something done.
But it's not just for, you know, my subdivision, I'm just thinking in general. I just don't, I don't know if you all have any problems on your roads, but.
Lake Inchem Road's perfect all the time, isn't it?
Well, mine wasn't perfect.
I guess what I was just, what I'm kind of getting at is, would there be any way you could get money to have, like, not a private plower, but like, have the Township, how you contract the Sheriff Department to come in? You know, can you get somebody from the Road Commission to come in and, you know, plow extra around here?
Yeah, that'd be a question for Linda to inquire with the Board about.
Well, probably, yes, that is correct. And in the days when I was young, a child here in the Township, we had our own plow, the Township Plow.
Is that possible again?
Well, I don't know, but I will bring it to the Board, and we will.
Also discuss it at the joint meeting with the Road.
Yes, I will, because, yes, I agree, Jim, the roads, we have a lot of emergency people that need to be able to get to places to help our residents.
And it's not even, it's, even 492, they're always so behind on 492, and, you know, you hit the city and all of a sudden, hey, it's plowed. I can go thirty miles an hour now, instead of fifteen. And, you know, you're always talking about how people, you want people to live in the Township and move here, and, which, you know, is a good thing, but when you have to move here and then deal with those roads like that? You know, people passed that millage before to get the roads into shape, you know, in the summer, and, you know, six months out of the year, you have to deal with those crummy roads after a snowstorm comes, and, you know, I just thought, you spend two hundred twenty thousand on that ambulance, and I thought, why, you know, why can't you get a plower, you know, contract with somebody to do something like that, to? I know it's a big township, you know, I understand you have to go a lot of places to do it, and, you know, where do you go? But I think you have, you have different, like, levels on the street of what gets plowed first, second, third, like the city does, I'm assuming?
Uh, the Road Commission, I mean, again, it's.
But I mean, if it was the Township that did it.
Oh, I would.
Yeah, we wouldn't cross-reference if it's a safehouse to school road, or if it's a.
To the fire.
If it's an emergency. If it's an emergency service road, if it's a complete street, if it's on the bus route, there's lots of variables that we would look at. But yeah, I mean.
I will.
I know that the Northwoods Estate subdivision contracts out their subdivision to be plowed out. But that's born and paid for by the residents of that subdivision. So.
That's one too.
They're there, they're there at four in the morning.
Something, where is it?
This is right behind the Subaru dealership. The Northwoods Estate subdivision is contracted out to Overstar, I believe.
I've probably plowed out our whole subdivision about five times since I've lived there because if I didn't, nobody would be getting out of there. Because, you know, that was really the half of 20 inches of snow or whatever. It's kind of fun.
You're, yeah, yeah. You have to buy more gas with those plows.
That big subdivision, but I just thought it'd be kind of nice to, you know, have, have the votes kind of taken care of during the winter. Like people want it during the summer or something.
Yeah, you know, if Linda doesn't bring it up, certainly staff can bring it up as a, you know, something that was mentioned.
Jason is presenting at the board meeting.
Yep.
Okay. Planning zoning report?
Um, well, for the next week, we'll be taking care of this grant application. Along with continued correspondence with Longyear, we are anticipating that they will be submitting their PUD application within the next few weeks.
Can I ask you just a question on the side on that project? So they're planning on, let's just say, you know, they, they put in what they want to put in there. Are their roads going to be private roads?
No, their roads, well, they will be private roads and privately maintained, but they will be built to a county spec.
Why would they do that?
Because it's required by our land.
Why should they keep them private? Why wouldn't they give it to the county if they can build the county spec? I mean, why would you make a residence incur those costs?
You're more than welcome.
I was just kind of curious. I mean, if you're going to build it to county spec.
You should ask them.
You know, why wouldn't the county take the roads over?
Well, that would just further.
The county would want to have to take the.
Yeah, I don't think they, the county would prefer to do it, but.
Well, wouldn't they have to go there?
Not necessarily.
No?
They didn't take them over.
Really?
Current bill.
No. And, well, that's because Cedarville wasn't built to a county spec. It's the longest private road in the history of the world.
And hooks into our roads.
So if you build something, they don't have to plow it if they don't want to or maintain the roads?
If, if there's an agreement on the private property for them to maintain it and it's born, the costs are borne by the residents, then no, the county does not have to.
Part of their H O.
Yeah, be in their H O. Maintenance.
Onward? Any more on that? Steve? We have reviewed the architectural plans for both the Texas Roadhouse and the Panera Bread. So you already see some equipment staged over there ahead of the weight restrictions. I'm sure they'll be going whole hog here as soon as the snow melts, if it ever does. I submitted a draft, well, the option agreement from Renovare Development LLC. Their option agreement to our legal counsel and to manager Kengus and to supervisor Grant, as well as a draft resolution. So that is currently with legal and waiting to go, that'll go to the board. Of course, we have our joint meeting with the Township Board. So remember, our next meeting on April 12th will actually be at 5:30. It'll be a longer night for us. Because we do have a couple of public hearings that night as well.
There was some confusion about the time. I remember, was it going to be five? Was it going to be 5:30?
I think it's at five at the board meeting.
What is it now?
Uh, well, I'll email you with what it is. I thought it was 5:30 for the sake of Steve getting off of work.
Wasn't that on the 26th?
Me, I just.
I thought it was on the 26th, that meeting.
Without me, I don't care. That's the.
26th.
I'll double check. I'll just. Disregard what I just said. I will double check and reaffirm when that meeting is.
The what?
A public hearing on something.
No, no, I'm, well, the joint meeting. I think that was the 26th.
What, what's the next public hearing on the 26th?
We have public hearings on the 12th, two of them.
Two of them, okay.
One is the proposed short-term rental and the other one is for the rezoning of the five acre piece of property that Renovare is proposing to develop.
And that April 12th meeting is also the joint meeting.
I believe it is, but I will confirm via email tomorrow.
26th, but I could be wrong.
Jason, I had a question. What is happening at that, this stylos property over by the golf course?
Heritage silos?
Yeah.
Yep. So finally, their development agreement for the PUD is going to the board next week. And if that is approved, it'll get signed by the supervisor, signed by the developer and recorded. And then they'll be working on finishing up and selling off those properties throughout the year.
So they're selling, um.
We've been, yeah, well, no, they're not permitted to sell the lots yet because we don't have enough information from them. And that's been the holdup. Mick Vonk is saying that we're holding up the project, but yet he hasn't provided us with any utility easements, stormwater easements, the things that we need in order to be, you know, would you buy a lot and they're not knowing if you're going to have water and sewer? So finally, the attorneys have come together, hammered it out. It's an agreement. It's going to move forward. It just took a while. And it's, it's to a point where Roger is comfortable with it. But yeah, Mick has been begging us for a couple of months now to allow him to sell lots because, you know, he's, the project is costing him money.
So they're going to sell the lots and then you have to have a certain construction go build your house?
I think that's already all lined up. He just needs to be able to sell some properties to, you'd be able to continue to cash flow the project.
I see. Okay. All right.
He's a pretty savvy developer. I understand he's a little bit PO'd at us, but it really wasn't our fault. It's really the lack of information that's been provided.
I didn't hear any of that just.
Oh, well, we hear it on the weekly, so.
I don't think anyone heard anything.
One, just one little quick thing. You mentioned the Panera Bread. We've had, you and I have had discussions about doing a land division application for that parcel. Is that going to now be the fact?
It's, it's on, uh, it's on my radar still, but I just haven't had the time to get to it. But yeah.
Just don't forget about that because I think we, that, that has to be done for that parcel.
Sure.
And I, I think Roger would concur with that too.
Yeah, and that's, I'm waiting to have, it's a very busy time of year.
I understand.
For Roger.
I understand.
Uh, but yeah, it's.
And actually, the Burger King parcel needs the same thing done because of the same configuration.
The Burger King parcel is its own parcel.
Was there a land division application for that?
Yes.
Okay. So that's not a lease?
Um, it may be a lease, but it's its own parcel.
Also they did it, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's great.
Uh, general zoning inquiries on the daily, just had a couple today and received another short-term rental application today. Property maintenance will commence once the snow melts. Business license, Eric reports that 70% of the business licenses have been issued with a March 1st deadline. So he'll send out another letter if they're not done by April 1st. And the CBA approved a dimensional variance on March 9th at 8 Oak Lane for an accessory structure to be built larger than what is allowed in that area on a 10 acre parcel. Kind of fits the scale of what's out there, so. That's pretty much it. Oh, the 2023 TAP grant application. So the grant application to develop the pathways between US 41 and Venture Drive along Wright Street and the pathway along Commerce Drive from Warner to the highway to kind of tie in all of our non-motorized. Those designs have been finalized now. There was some issues with the Wright Street portion because Wright Street's going to go on a little bit of a road diet. There'll be a 10-foot pathway on the, on the east side of that road with a one or two-foot rumble strip in between the pathway and the curve. And that was a way, design-wise, that the federal government would allow us to get grant money for that. So hopefully that project moves forward. I don't know if it's going to get constructed this year. It may be next year at this point, so. And then, of course, we're still working on our attainable housing zoning text amendments. I will get those, like I said, I'm still waiting to have a meeting with Roger. So that discussion with Panera and the housing zoning text amendments that we agreed to conceptually at our last meeting will be forwarded on to him. And then when Eric returns, we'll continue our discussion on residential solar. That's, that's the gist of it.
On the Township Board calendar, it does show that that joint meeting is on the 26th at five.
Great. I will remind the supervisor who does sometimes get confused on dates, so I will remind her that it is on the 26th. That's helpful.
Okay. Yeah, be such a long day.
It's on the 26th.
Lots of it showing on the calendar.
Yeah.
So that's all I'm saying.
Didn't say what time.
Five.
Five.
We moved it from 5:30 to five, I remember.
Okay. Well, I thought we were trying to.
Because she said we needed more time because last time at 5:30, she's, she felt really rushed.
I had an hour and a half, you know, I suppose. Well.
Announcements?
Yeah, MTU versus Penn State.
One and done.
Go Huskies!
I got a feeling.
What a heartbreaker for Northern.
Yeah, no kidding.
And Michigan State too, huh?
Yeah.
All those Spartans.
Yeah.
Of course, Northern lost. And then there was something on TV6 that announced a new coach for the hockey team. And I'm thinking, oh my God, they fired him already. But it was for the club team, it wasn't for the team. But that was kind of a confusing article.
I know. It said they, it did say Division II though, so.
Yeah.
Not Division I, but. A lot of people probably just thought, oh.
Poor Grant and his family. But yeah, heartbreaker when you're up 2-0 going into the third, although they say a two-goal lead or a three-goal lead is the worst lead they have.
They said the refs called some pretty shady.
Yeah, I did watch the game. And yeah, they should have let them play more.
What was it, hooking or slashing or what, what'd they call?
On the end?
Yeah.
Yeah, there was a.
They called two at the end.
It was, uh.
I think it was a slash. Somebody slashed a stick.
That was their own call.
I mean, they weren't like major penalties or anything. They could have just let them go down.
In a game like that, you should let the teams decide and not so much the refs, in my opinion.
Well, then plus Colgate got in there instead of them and they beat Colgate twice and had the same record. So how'd that happen?
It's the same as what happens every year.
Well, Northern goes up and smacks down MTU and then MTU gets a bid into the prison fort.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because of.
Record, record. And they wiped them three out of four games. They're in regular season, right as well. So that counts a little bit.
No public here for public comment. So we'll do additional comments by finding commissioners. Steve? Demi?
Nothing.
Bethany? Linda? I don't have anything either. So meeting adjourned. Wings on tonight?
No, they played last night and they're not even worth watching anymore, to be honest with you. Not this year. They're not going to make the playoffs. You watch them because it's like having a sore tooth. You just can't quit touching it. But they were, they lost the last two nights. No, they won. They beat Blues. Who are also in the bottom of the barrel.
Yeah.
So my little grandson, who went to play in the state playoffs.
Oh, yeah.
They won.
I know.
Yeah.
Awesome.
In the third period, they were up by two goals and the other team tied them to go into overtime.
Ooh, luckily they won.
So he was in that 10 U, hey?
He was, yeah. So, so Northern, they won.
Yeah, Ben Conan is one of my, my son's friends.
I said, um, I don't ever, ever remember a house league sport team going to state.
No.
Never.